Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Pierce County Council. It's Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. The time is approximately 3:03 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Krueger. Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Excused.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
There's six members present, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We have six members present and a quorum. Item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Our moment of silence today is dedicated to the lives lost in the most recent mass shooting and gun violence in Washington State this last weekend at the Gorge Amphitheater in central Washington. Two people were killed and numerous others were seriously injured. Our hearts go out to the many families and individuals impacted by this latest experience of gun violence. I'll soon ask us to stand and will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of these lives lost and affected by gun violence this last weekend. Please stand. Flags in the back of the chambers for our guests. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there any objection to approving our agenda as published? Not seeing any. Before we get to the consent agenda, because we have some newer faces, at least newer to me faces, we welcome everyone to participate in these open public meetings. Thank you for being with us, to make sure that everyone feels welcomed and understands our rules of procedure. Any member of the public is welcome to provide comment on any action item of the council. You'll hear me open a public hearing during any action item of the council, and you'll be invited to come to the podium and state your name and give remarks for up to three minutes. We also have, at the very end of our meeting, we have a section of our meeting entitled Citizens Forum. This, too, at the very end of our meeting, is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council of any matter of importance to you. And we would invite you to do that as well at the end of the meeting. So just wanted to make sure folks feel welcomed and understand how to participate. Seeing our approval of the agenda, Vice Chair Campbell, I'm told we have folks here for... and three, I'm told, Vice Chair Campbell. Brings us to consent agenda. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move that we adopt Consent Agenda, moving items C1, C2, and C3 to Section 7 of the agenda, and approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt the Consent Agenda with the exception of moving items C1, 2, and 3 to Section 7 of our agenda. All, excuse me, Madam Chair, will you... Excuse me, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Madam Chair, sound good.
Giving your demotion today.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
By a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the Consent Agenda is adopted. That brings us to Section 7, Proclamations of Boards and Our Appointments to Boards and Committees. We're back to proposal number R-2023-94. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
I move proposal number R-2023-94.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded to adopt proposal R-2023-94. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R-2023-94, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the appointment of one new member, David Baumgartner, to the Gig Harbor Peninsula Land Use Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner, thank you for being with us. I'd like to turn it over to you to briefly introduce yourself and share whatever you would like to share with council.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for taking a few minutes with me. My name's David Baumgartner. I am from Tacoma originally, and I live in Gig Harbor now. And entrepreneur in some different businesses and interested in just seeing the development and what's happening and want to contribute if I can to the county as they're working in the area. And I'm just grateful to possibly be a part.
Thank you, Mr. Baumgartner. This is a public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to provide comment on this resolution to appoint one new member to the Gig Harbor Peninsula Land Use Advisory Commission, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. Your comments have to be focused on the appointment of David Baumgartner to the Gig Harbor Peninsula Land Use Advisory Commission.
Oh, that's cool.
State your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Nice. I'm in Musica, and it's like, no, I know Gig Harbor's got pull. It's like, I'm from, I was born right near Brown's Point, and like, I know money comes from Gig Harbor. So I would support those people if their actions are positive. Sounds like they positive and why not? And that's why I have to say out there, the Gig Harbor Bridge shit and stuff, is that what she built for them? That was $100, honestly. I'd probably try to lower the tap price and stuff. I know it gets pricey for them.
Need to please focus your comments on the appointment of David Baumgartner to the Land Use Advisory Commission.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So...
Do we have the timer running?
Yes, do.
Thank you.
There we go. Yeah, the positive action is that I talked to Mr. Mello, is like, what is his agenda?
The agenda item is to appoint David Baumgartner to the Land Use Advisory Commission in Gig Harbor.
There we go. Yeah, okay, that's cool. We got 30... The land debt agenda for what?
For the Gig Harbor area.
What are they trying to approve?
This is not a back and forth, sir.
Oh, yeah, I understand, Mr. Mello.
Your time's expired.
I understand. But I would...
Sir, your time is expired.
Yeah, that's a good area out there.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment on this appointment? Not seeing anyone in chambers. Mr. Winesbury, is there anyone online?
I don't see any hands online, sir.
Seeing no hands online, we'll bring it back to council. Final remarks by council members. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And thank you to Mr. Baumgartner for his application. I'm actually not supportive at this time of this nomination, and I've spoken to the executive about this and some of his staff. And this is an "at this time" type of situation. I've got a couple of questions about, just some unresolved questions related to some properties, and this is a Land Use Advisory Commission role, so I'd like to explore that further and would be happy to entertain an application in the future, you know, once I'm satisfied of some of the concerns or questions, I should say, at this time. But thank you again, Mr. Baumgartner, for your interest. We really appreciate and can always use folks. I'm willing to step forward for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other final remarks? Vice Chair Campbell.
Just a technical question maybe for council hearing. Councilmember Denson's wanting to do more exploratory, maybe just hold this over to a future date. It's probably the best thing to do, just vote this down today and then just reconsideration after we've had a chance to look at anything into it at that point. Is that...
So I believe that the 30-day period, this would be the last day, I believe, for the 30-day period. Under the charter, the council has the option to approve or reject any appointments sent up by the executive within that 30-day period. If they do not, if you do not, the appointment is deemed approved. So you don't really have the option to continue at this point, but if it were voted down at this point, the executive could send up a new application at a later date to fill that vacancy.
So what would, normally with a lot of items, when we want to take another look at it, we extend it to another date. Now a possibility today. Our best course of action is to go ahead, vote this down, and then we'll open up applications and do the process again and do due diligence. So with that, I would be supportive of our process that we have in force.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Thank you for clarifying our process. For anyone not following, when the executive makes a nomination for appointment to a board or commission, the council has up to 30 days to accept that and approve that nomination. If we do nothing, the nomination is adopted. If the 30 days goes by and the council takes no action, the appointment is deemed valid and made. Counsel's only action then is to either reject it or deny it, reject it or approve it, the point that Vice Chair Campbell made. The executive also reserves the right to resubmit a nomination. The executive could resubmit the nomination if he so choose. Just wanted to make sure that was clear. Councilmember Krueger.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to confirm that it doesn't preclude the applicant from applying again at another time. It's just at this moment, and it doesn't pass. They can still apply in a month or six months again.
Absolutely. Yes, certainly.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other final remarks? Councilmember Herrera.
So just for clarification, because I've never seen this happen before. So we're just going to be pausing, or we're going to vote this down and, oh, we may. I don't know what the votes are going to be. If we do vote it down, Councilmember Krueger's question was answered about he can reapply. So the process when the exec... Because this is my question for the executive. There's an application process and there's qualifications to it, and this is not a qualification argument or anything like that? Or is it just... I guess elaborate a little bit more on your...
Councilmember Denson.
I mean, I have to say...
It's not, yeah, it's not really qualifications. I don't know that, I don't think there really are qualifications for this particular position. There's just some questions that I have in regards to land use, considering things that are important to the people of District 7. And I just want to be real concerned and respectful of the community and things that they're concerned about and just get some questions answered. And I offered this to the executive as well, that if we could get a few things resolved or at least explained in a way that I felt comfortable with, then I'd be happy to entertain it again. But until that happens, I just want to make sure when people ask, I'm like, yes, I did my due diligence and everyone's following the same rules and complying with, you know, all of the same regulations. And yeah, I would definitely welcome back an application in the future, which, as I think has been noted, could come up at any time, because that's the prerogative of the executive.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think the point that some are trying to make is, you know, a 30-day continuance is not a possibility for the council.
That could've been better, but we can't do that.
Yeah. A 30-day continuance or any number of days of continuance would de facto approve the nomination, and the council member is making an argument to not do that at this time. And so this is really the only, there's one of two options for council today. So the motion before us is to approve the appointment, to confirm the appointment of one new member, David Baumgartner, to the Gig Harbor Peninsula Land Use Advisory Commission. Will take a voice vote. All those in favor of confirming the appointment, please say aye.
Mr. Chair, though...
I'm sorry? Oh.
It would have to be a roll call?
Thank you, thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? I tried for expedition. I always fail.
Councilmember Denson.
No.
Councilmember Herrera.
Nay.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Nay.
Councilmember Campbell.
Nay.
Councilmember Krueger.
Nay.
And Councilmember Mello.
Nay.
The result of the roll call vote is zero ayes and six nays.
On a vote of zero ayes and six nays, the resolution is not adopted. That brings us to proposal number R-2023-96. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title to the record?
Yes. Proposal number R-2023-96, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the appointment of one new member, Camilia Matu Ruma, Rana, excuse me, and the reappointment of two existing members, Alice Fong and George Consuelo, to the Commission on Refugee and Immigrant Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have a couple of the members in chambers and online. Mr. Consuelo, welcome. We invite you to, many of us know you, but you're up for reappointment today. If you want to reintroduce yourself to council and say a few words, you're welcome to the podium.
Thank you, Councilmember Mello. Buenas tardes, consejo del Condado Pierce. Good afternoon, members of the Pierce County Council. It is a pleasure to be here up in front of you again today for my reappointment onto the Commission for Refugee and Immigrant Affairs. We, I have been serving on Creia for one term along with my chairmate, previous chairmate, Alice Fong. And it has been a wonderful opportunity to get a feeling of the communities that are often overseen here in Pierce County. I know that there has been in, we've been stepping in the right direction of making Pierce County a welcoming county, Tacoma a welcoming city, and trying to make our place that we call home a place for everyone to call home. And I just wanted to say thank you again for hearing me today. I wish to continue serving to the best of my ability along with my fellow seatmates and making sure that the voices of the Latino community, the Ukrainian community, the immigrant community, and the refugee communities are heard, and not only heard, but acted upon. I know we also have some action items from the council with one specific from Councilmember Mello and then one kind of logistics specific that Councilmember Hitchens had mentioned last time that we were here. And we aim to fulfill those, not only for the citizens here, but also for the council and to have a better understanding overall. Thank you so much for having us today, and I know we have a new appointee, so very happy to have you on the council, I'm sorry, not the council, on the commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being with us. Camila?
Yes, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Great. I wanted to be there in person, but unfortunately I contracted COVID last week, so I thought it was better to appear virtually. Hello, and thank you for appointing me to this Commission on Refugee and Immigrant Affairs. I have both professional and personal experience with refugees and immigrants. I have, for the last eight years, worked as an immigration attorney with the Northwest Immigrant Rights Project, assisting immigrants and refugees attain legal status in the United States. My father was also exiled from his home country in the 1970s after a violent coup, and he was not allowed to return for many years and had to start his life over in the United States, estranged from his family and community. So I am personally and professionally honored to work with the county and other commission members to develop a plan on how to best welcome refugees and help them thrive in our community. Thank you.
Well, thank you for being with us. We're sorry you contracted COVID. Thank you for being respectful and safe and not, and being safe and not spreading it to the rest of us. We do sincerely hope your symptoms are mild and your recovery is quick. Thank you for being with us. Alice?
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity to potentially become reappointed to serve at this, on this commission. We, in the past six months, I have been very humbled to be recognized as a chair. We accomplished many things in creating our mission statement that is in supportive to, as my fellow teammate had mentioned, a place people are proud to call home and to build strong communities, and that's to engage the whole Pierce County. You know, our mission statement and welcome, you know, potentially the new appointee. Our mission is we are community advocates with lived experience, collaborating with Pierce County leadership, refugees, and immigrants to create a thriving and inclusive society. And our core values that we chose are interconnectedness, equity, compassion, and open-mindedness. And we have a work plan for the next six months that our new incoming leadership is going to help steward, and it would be to look at civic engagement, education, and also employment and how it really affects the whole community. And so we're really excited and what, you know, into moving that work forward. It's a really great team on the commission and to support the council, the county council members in that vision that we have. So thank you.
Thank you, Alice. We're actually going to follow our rules of procedure, and I'm going to actually ask...
This item to put it properly before us. I would move proposal number R-2023-96.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt proposal number R-2023-96. We already had the clerk read into the record. I was so excited to get to these appointees that I missed that step. My apologies, Vice Chair Campbell. Thank you to my colleagues for bearing with me today. Sincerely thank you to these appointees for being with us. Thank you for introducing and reintroducing yourselves. We're going to move into a public hearing. Is there any member of the public wishing to provide public comment on the appointment of these three members to the Commission on Refugee and Immigrant Affairs? Looking in the chambers first. Not seeing any, Mr. Winesbury, anyone online wishing to provide comment on this resolution?
No hands online, sir.
Seeing no hands online, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair, and happy to be bringing this forward. I want to thank George and Alice for your leadership on this commission and the good work that you've been getting underway of getting it started and giving us a good place. Had a good conversation with Camilia about your background. Excited to have you coming on board. I think you're going to fill in some needed gaps that we have in making sure that we're bringing voice of immigrants and refugees from all across our community and then advising the county on it. So I just am so happy and honored about the work that you guys are doing. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for your willingness to serve, to support the populations in our county. As we know, one of the things that we are really working on here at the council level and the county level is making sure that underrepresented populations that are part of our community are part of the conversation, and the work that you're doing really drives that. Love the work around the mission statement and the things. And then I think I heard George say Creia. Is that what we're, is that how we say, is it, is that the acronym turned into a word, Creia? Is that a thing? Okay, thanks. See, I learned something new. Thank you. And congratulations, Camila. Sounds like you'll have a phenomenal team to work with and appreciate your expertise coming to the table. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Krueger, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. Councilmember Krueger.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to share that I've only been able to make one Zoom and one in-person, and I wanted you folks to know how much I appreciated your enthusiasm. That is so key in making things successful, and it was very interesting and a lot of fun to be there. So thank you for your serving. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no final, no other final remarks on this appointment resolution, I too want to...
Sir, there is a hand that went up.
We closed the public hearing already. Thank you for letting me know, though. We, I too want to thank our returning members for your leadership and all the hard work that you're doing and our new member, Camila, who is joining us. You all have tremendous lived experience and other expertise, and we're very grateful that you're sharing it for the benefit of all of Pierce County. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on R-2023-96?
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to proposal number R-2023-97. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
I move proposal number R-2023-97.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt proposal R-2023-97. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title into the record?
Proposal number R-2023-97, a resolution of the Pierce County Council confirming the reappointment of one existing member, Holly Johnson, to the Pierce County Community Development Corporation Board of Directors.
Thank you. Ms.... Holly, you see her in the attendees, Councilmember Hitchens. Holly Johnson is on the attendees list. Did we bump her to a panelist?
I tried to, but she declined, so I'm going to try it again.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, if you are listening, we are actively trying to bump you to a panelist so you can participate and introduce yourself. There you go. Welcome. Holly, we'd like to turn it over to you to briefly introduce yourself and share briefly why you wish to serve. Thought I saw her get bumped.
She's up there.
Yeah, I see her. Holly, we see your microphone on. Holly, if you're talking, we can't hear you. Well, not every appointee does take the opportunity to come to council. We have their written materials in our packet as always, and we're able to review the information and ask questions ahead of time. Holly, we cannot hear you, so we are going to move on to the public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on the appointment of Holly Johnson to the Pierce County Community Development Corporation Board of Directors? Not seeing anyone in chambers. Mr. Winesbury, anybody online?
Seeing no hands online, sir.
Seeing no hands online, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Are there final remarks by council members? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I had a conversation this morning with Holly. She was in attendance during Human Services, and I said that she didn't have to attend. She was going to try and come in person, but she spent a good solid two hours down here as a volunteer in case, in case we had any questions about the Community Development Corporation. So just appreciate her willingness to continue serving, especially as we are looking at possibly ramping up their workload. And so the fact that she's willing to sign on again sounds wonderful, so I will be supporting. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Holly.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Holly, we apologize if the technical difficulties on our end, but as Councilwoman Hitchens said, thank you for being with us for an extended period this morning and trying to be with us this evening remotely. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on R-2023-97?
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to, there's no other business on there, Section 7. That brings us to Section 8, Ordinances. We do have proposal 2023-22S in front of us. Councilmember Denson for a motion.
Yes, I move proposal number 2023-22S.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt proposal number 2023-22S. Madam Clerk, please read the title into the record.
Proposal number 2023-22S, in orders of the Pierce County Council repealing and replacing the Growth Management Act, 2044 housing unit targets for city, towns, and unincorporated areas of Pierce County, adopting 2044 housing unit targets... areas of Pierce County, adopting 2044 housing unit targets by income band using the Department of Commerce Housing for All Planning Tool and adopting findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Kruger.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, council members. This proposed legislation would repeal and re-adopt housing unit targets for cities, towns, and the unincorporated county. The council previously adopted housing unit targets for cities, towns, and the county through ordinance number 2022-46S. This proposal would also adopt housing unit targets by income band, as well as emergency housing targets for each jurisdiction in the county. Following the county's adoption of housing targets in August 2022, the State Department of Commerce issued formal guidance for establishing housing unit targets and introduced what's called a housing for, housing for all planning tool, which results in different county-wide housing unit targets and several options for distributing housing unit targets by various income bands. Revised housing unit targets and the allocation of housing units by income band were evaluated by the county's Growth Management Coordinating Committee, as well as by the Pierce County Regional Council, and have been forwarded to the council this afternoon for your adoption. This proposal was also considered by the Community Development Committee at its June 5, 2022, public hearing, and was forwarded on to the full council without recommendation. I would note that the housing unit targets for the unincorporated county and each jurisdiction are shown in Exhibit A to the ordinance, and the housing unit allocation by income band are shown in Exhibit B to the ordinance. I would also note that Erica Rhett-Hunt and Angie Silva with Planning and Public Works Department are on the call in case the council members have any technical questions regarding this legislation, and I'm happy to take questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kruger. Let me turn to department staff. Ms. Rhett-Hunt, do you have anything from the department to add?
Yes, thank you, Chair Mello. Having some difficulty, there we go. Thank you so much. My name is Erica Rhett-Hunt. I'm the Long Range Planning Supervisor, and I just wanted to add a quick, a few quick words. We are required to plan for a housing target as provided by Commerce. This was amended in the Growth Management Act in 2021. It also requires us to plan for housing targets for all income level levels and to meet other policy and regulatory changes to be compliant with GMA. When the legislature passed this in 2021, they didn't provide any exemption from or extension for compliance, like they actually did this year in their legislative session where they allowed Puget Sound jurisdictions to implement the changes of, of House Bill 1181 at a later date. Commerce's guidance and HAP tool came late in the process for our Puget Sound communities. All four of the Puget Sound counties and their cities and towns are working with these imperfect tools, trying to imply them as intended, and they're also trying to make some compromises. In our case, we're keeping our adopted population targets and only modifying the amount of housing that the population will produce. And our compromise with Commerce gets us pretty close to what Pierce County was planning for housing-wise. What we've done through the process is our best effort to balance the approach in consideration of Vision 2050 goals and policies, and also to integrate the original direction that was included with the adoption of the growth targets in 2022. The proposed findings of facts in Exhibit C outline the concerns expressed by the representatives of our cities and towns about some of the shortcomings of the Commerce approach, and if adopted, that would provide a record of the county's concerns as well. While we're planning for the next 20 years with our comprehensive plan updates, please keep in mind that we have to provide a progress report to Commerce in five years, and we also in another 10 years are going to do another comprehensive plan update. So these milestones are going to provide an opportunity to adjust our plans and policies to reflect new data that we've collected and updated approaches. We expect that as communities implement these approaches, we, or implement HV 1220, there will be updates to the approach as well. There is a lot of discussion about this at the Growth Management Coordinating Committee and the Pierce County Regional Council, and for now, the PCRC recommendation that's been forwarded to you is to approve Commerce's proposed housing target for its distribution to cities and towns and its distribution by income level as identified in the HAP tool Method A. Method A is, is considered an equal share method in which each community takes a proportionate share of housing by income level according to its growth target. And it's really important that the department expressed that delaying adoption of the housing unit targets will significantly delay our process for adopting the periodic review and as well as similar updates that are required for our cities and towns. Many of our communities, including the county, are waiting on these numbers to initiate modeling for capital facilities and transportation planning efforts, which are central to the issue of how are we going to manage our growth for the next 20 years. So adoption of, of a recommendation today would allow us to proceed with our comprehensive planning and get our updates adopted within our update window. Thank you.
Thank you for that, that added explanation. Questions by council members before we open this up for a public hearing? Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. I was just curious if anyone on staff, both department staff and council staff, are we aware of any of the other jurisdictions, so Kings, Snohomish, or Kitsap? Have they adopted these yet, or are we first?
Let's turn to department staff to see if, department staff, are you aware of other counties in the Puget Sound Regional Council region if they've adopted this?
The last that we've heard, the other communities are also in the process of reviewing their housing targets and, and, and doing updates. Now, not all of the communities will be required to do updates to their housing targets, but Snohomish County and Kitsap County, when they, based on their adopted housing targets, they also had the situation where they're happed, the output of the HAP tool did not match their adopted housing targets. So they're proceeding with coordination with Commerce and working through their local process. I don't believe that they've adopted yet, but I haven't checked in the last couple of weeks. King County is working through a different type of situation in applying the HAP tool because they only adopted, they only adopted housing targets, not population targets. So a little bit of a difference for King County, but all four of the communities are looking at how these, how the Commerce guidance and, and the HAP tool will be applied in their communities.
So all four counties are being asked to use the HAP tool where they'll designate growth housing units by income levels, all four counties? Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera?
Thank you, Chair. Just looking through the packet, and I seen one letter from Du, City of Dupont in opposition of some of the, I guess, some of the target housing numbers, I believe. Was there any other pushback from any other cities on, on the numbers for, for the cities?
Mr. Kruger?
Thank you. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Herrera. Dupont was the only jurisdiction at the PCRC to vote against the targets as recommended by the GMCC. We've received no other pushback at this time.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
And I believe the city's on the call today as well, and they could probably express their concerns. I understand that they're planning to do that today.
Okay.
Thank you for the question. One more question that I had for department staff, I believe, and then we're going to open this up for a public hearing. One of the, one of the concerns we heard from the City of Dupont at the Community Development Committee of the council about this matter was that through Vision 2050, the four-county regional council approach to growth management, different geographies, different communities are, are put into different geographies, and the, the language used in Vision 2050, one, one geography is called a high-capacity transit geography, and the City of Dupont is put in that geography, high-capacity transit geography. Yet the City of Dupont makes the point that they don't have what is considered high-capacity transit. They don't have a bus that runs every 15 minutes or more frequently, or some other form of transit. They simply do not have it. Therefore, how can they be, how can they be dubbed high-capacity, how can they be dubbed as part of the high-capacity transit geography? Ms. Rhett-Hunt, could you please speak to that? I know that's not something that our planning department made happen and designated the City of Dupont, but could you put as simply as you can what is going on there with that concern that the City of Dupont has made, and what the forum is for making, for, for readdressing that, that what I think is a valid concern by the City of Dupont?
Certainly. Based on the comments that Dupont has made previously, it's certainly easy to empathize, empathize with the plight that they have in the difficulty of planning for a high-capacity transit community that doesn't have high-capacity transit, and some of the other, some of the other community supports that may go along with that. However, the decision that's being made today doesn't affect that decision at all. Those decisions are made in the regional growth strategy, which is, which are, and those are made by the Puget Sound Regional Council. So in order to have their regional geography changed from high-capacity transit community to something different, they would need to participate in that forum and get the designation changed. At this time, the adoption of the housing targets, what all, the adoption, the re-adoption of the housing targets won't change the overall population target that they have to plan for, nor will it change the policies under Vision 2050 that they will need to plan for as well.
Thank you for that. We, we heard those concerns, both in a, in, in writing by the City of Dupont and in the council's committee that heard this matter, so I wanted to ground us in that before we open the public hearing. So seeing no other hands by council at this time, let's do open this up for a public hearing. Is there any member of the public wishing to provide comment on Resolution 2023-22S? Anyone in chambers? Seeing no one in chambers, Mr. Weinsberry, anybody online?
We have two hands online. So we have Mayor Frederick, and we have Barb Kincaid from Dupont. So, Mayor Frederick, go ahead.
Mayor Frederick, we'll begin with you.
Okay, you can hear me well, I assume?
We can hear you, Mayor.
Okay. First, thank you to Council Chair Ryan Mello and the Community Development Committee for forwarding the housing proposal and numbers to the full council without a recommendation due to the fact that the proposal is flawed. Now, I'm not going to rehash all the reasons why the HAP tool is flawed with a one-size-fits-all approach, because it appears there is some general agreement on that point. One rationale for accepting the proposal is that we are short of time to get everything done. While that is never a good reason to produce a flawed result, I'll also note that various state agencies like WashDOT don't have any problem pushing out deadlines if needed to get the best result. The more pressing rationale for acceptance, as presented by the PCRC, is that the county and the city are required to use these affordable housing numbers not as policy guidance, but as hard numbers that somehow must be met as a matter of law. Setting aside the fact, this is generally infeasible for most cities, as we cannot force developers to build only affordable housing, nor can we create zoning where only affordable housing can be built. It also appears to be legally incorrect, as previously discussed by our city planner. The City of Dupont's recommendation is that the county council send the proposed ordinance from the PCRC back with instructions to make the HAP tool a policy guidance tool, not a number generator that produces an essentially impossible task on cities. We further recommend the county council request the GMCC work with cities and towns to develop policies concerning what makes sense in their particular circumstances that can then be integrated into the PCRC and later county council, council action. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being with us.
Next person we have is Barb Kincaid from Dupont.
Hello. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity and the good work from your staff on this. We are, as Mayor Frederick very stated, very concerned about the, the numbers and the fact that the City of Dupont has such unrealistic numbers to plan for due to the fact that we have the, the classification as a high-transit community. We did meet with the Puget Sound Regional Council about this, and the path to change that was possible. Their recommendation to us was to come before you and actually try to work through the reconciliation process that Pierce County has, and, or, or maybe even if it, I know time is, is a real constraint for all of us, but the idea that we may be able to push this back, just to work a little more at the GMCC, to make a request that even though the PSRC would still classify Dupont as the HTC community, they would make concession if we were able to explain in our comp plan that we had, we had smaller numbers. I mean, basically, what we're looking at is the collective share of projected growth is about 21% for a high-transit community designation versus 6.5 for our cities and towns. So there's a big difference. And really, we know that it's not, as much as we support and believe in working towards affordable housing, we don't necessarily think that these numbers are going to be attainable, and that's going to cause, I think, not just for Dupont, but for a lot of these other cities in our, in our cohort as well, difficulty in even being compliant or consistent. We, so we're asking, you know, that you consider, I know that time is, is going to be messed up for everybody, but maybe if you could consider letting us work back downstream on these numbers with the GMCC and the PCRC. Also, you know, we, we really don't interpret that Commerce is requiring cities and counties to adopt your, the HAP tool. So attachment B to your ordinance, we think maybe could not, you know, these hard and fast numbers, as Mayor Frederick already spoke to you, just, they're not, they're not realistic, and we would ask for your consideration about maybe, rather than saying these are numbers, for these affordable housing bands that we have to meet target numbers, that they be used more as a guidance, as I believe that the statute actually intended to do so. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
No other questions?
Seeing no other hands, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Councilmember Kruger?
Thank you, Chair. May I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Which came to mind, what would the repercussions be if it, if it were be, be able to go back to PCRC? I mean, does that delay things too much, or what would the process look like for that?
It would certainly delay things. As you've been hearing at Community Development, the department is, you know, really pressed to complete its work in time for the 2024 Conference of Plan Update. All the cities and towns are in the same boat regarding this, this kind of rigid deadline of December 2024, and the housing targets are, are part of that mix. The, the, all, all of these plans need to show in their comprehensive plan updates how they accommodate for certain housing unit targets by income band. And so I can't say what it would take. Every jurisdiction is differently, is different in terms of, you know, the number of staff they have and their capacity to do this work. I know our department in Pierce County is stretched extremely thinly when it comes to getting everything done that they need to get done, and without the housing targets established, which is a benchmark, the, the work can't proceed. And so that's why we're, it's very unfortunate that the housing tool came out in March 2023, and, and the state laws, as was mentioned, does specifically indicate that Commerce establishes those numbers, and they chose those numbers, and they chose to establish the numbers through this tool. Now, I would just, one more thing to add. If you take a look at the findings of fact that's associated with this ordinance, you will read about the concerns that everyone's expressing regarding the pickle that we're in, in terms of getting this work done and using this particular tool. And we're looking to work with Commerce in the years ahead to change the way that this is happening.
Okay. Having said that, you know, Mr. Chair, this is just really giving me a lot of cognitive dissonance, because we've been visioning since like 1990, if not earlier, and I'm not seeing things progressing in a better way. It's more of central planning, and it's planning going beyond the basics of citing essential facilities. And DuPont brings up valid points. It's like we're having to plan for things on paperwork, things that we know we can't accomplish, and I don't think that sets a good precedence, and it makes for poor planning, you know, to set for the future. And if there are a way that we could send it back to the PCRC, I could support this. I appreciate it that it came to the council with no recommendation. I still find us being held hostage, in a sense, having to vote for something because it's mandated. Why do we even have to do that? So, I'm just finding where I was going to support this on going through the facts, I will not be able to. But thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. And I want to thank department staff for clearly articulating in the legislation that there are flaws, there are questions, there are problems. I'm genuinely curious about what our peer counties are going to do with this information. And it's hard. I understand the frustration of DuPont, and there are other communities that raised questions, but kind of just went, ah, you know, like, we don't know what to do, because they have this law that says they have to plan. And we were given a tool that raised tons of concern when we saw the numbers originally. And then, once they had the conversation, we landed on some numbers that seemed closer to what we were thinking about. But then, we added the income levels. And honestly, my understanding is this is the first time we've actually, as a region, said, hey, we need to plan for all different levels of income, including emergency and permanently supportive housing. And had we started planning regionally in the '70s and '80s with this in mind, where would we be with homelessness today? Where would we be with seniors and people with disabilities being able to find housing? And so, I don't want to say too little, too late. I want to say that this is the first attempt. Super frustrating that we got it late. But, and again, I'm happy to work with Commerce, have those conversations, let's work together on this. But the market is not going to solve this. And so, this is, in my opinion, its opinion, this is a way of us as a region saying, we're going to commit to these numbers. Here's what my community is thinking about, state and region, let's plan this together and open that door, because you're going to think about it for your community, but we know that you can't do it alone. And I think that this is a way of saying, as a region, how we can hit some of these goals. And we're putting it in paper, and then the state is saying we have to do it, so the state's going to have to step up in some of these cases. In DuPont's situation, one of the areas that they are concerned about is an area of contamination due to, I believe, ammunitions that were built in our region. And that was not DuPont's decision, because DuPont didn't really exist. So, how do we hold them accountable to trying to plan for an area that they can't even touch? And so, I think this is a way of saying, if we're going to work on this together as a region, and this is important, we need to literally work together. And so, that is why I'll be supporting this. I do hear the concerns, and if we'd had more time, I think we could have had a much deeper conversation, and I think that we should look at that as we move forward, because this will come back around in 10 years, and it seems to happen really quickly. So, what would be a good timeline for cities and counties to really have that conversation and let Commerce know so in 2033, they aren't having the same debate? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Hitchens, for those comments. They were similar to some of the ways that I've been thinking about this. I mean, we've heard that these numbers are flawed, the timing certainly is not helpful and didn't allow us for a lot of time to work through this. So, I had a question for Ms. Rhett-Hunt, if she's still on there. And I believe Councilmember Hitchens just kind of alluded to this. What are the opportunities? I mean, 2050 is a long way away. We will be doing planning between now and then. So, what are the opportunities coming up that could allow us to explore opportunities for changing some of the way that Commerce looks at this, for opening up opportunities for jurisdictions to work together? If some jurisdictions have room and want to grow and have transit now, and others are coming later, we can negotiate that in a way that makes sense. Are there opportunities for adjustments and improving this as we move forward?
So, I think there's two... Thank you for your question, Councilmember Denson. I think there's two opportunities to make potential changes. So, first, when we think about Growth Management Act and state and the Department of Commerce, they understand that the tools that they've put together aren't perfect. They're still actually working through several items, even though they have published guidance. They're working through several items about how they will interpret and apply guidance to issues that have popped up even in issuing their guidance. So, I think that being involved with the state being advocates, that allows the county the ability to help change that guidance overall. What will happen is, over our Puget Sounds updates to their comprehensive plans are all due in 2024, and then in 2025, the rest of, most of the rest of Western Washington that plans under Growth Management will also have to follow these same requirements. And then, in 2026, it'll be Eastern Washington. So, that'll be three rounds of updates that will give input to Commerce about their approach and updates to their guidance. The Puget Sound communities are required to do a report to Commerce about implementation of their housing strategies within five years. That will be an opportunity to open up a discussion about approach modifications and changes. In fact, that was specifically built to be an opportunity to open up a conversation about what's working and what isn't with policy guidance and strategies. And then, of course, as we approach our next update in 10 years, we would expect to see refined guidance from Commerce through all those rounds of iterations and revisions. So, lots of opportunities there. The other opportunity that we have is through commitment that Commerce and PSRC have informally made to try and work through the issues, the consistency issues between the HAP tool and Vision 2050. So, as was discussed in the CDC meeting, there are some issues where the HAP tool distributes growth in areas that may not be as favored in Vision 2050 policies. And so, while we did our best effort to try and balance that in our approach, there's ongoing issues between the Puget Sound Regional Council and Commerce. They'll be working through to create a better result for the Puget Sound region. Some of the issues about high-capacity transit communities, PSRC geographies, those can be worked through the Puget Sound Regional Council process. I don't know when the Puget Sound Regional Council is planning on updating Vision 2050, probably not for a good time again, but there will be opportunities for ratifications to Vision 2050 in the upcoming years, where we can play a part in that as well. So, many opportunities over the next two to 10 years for us to make a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the many questions by councilmembers and the discussion. I, too, will be voting in favor today. We've, I think, acknowledged this is an imperfect tool, but we've all noted work to do over the next many months and a couple of years, not waiting till Vision gets updated at the regional level, and certainly not waiting until 10 years from now when we do the next major periodic update. So, there's strong commitment here. I am glad we are finally planning for different housing types and different income bands. That is a level of planning that I think the region has sorely missed for a long time, and we're seeing the result of it with our housing crisis, one of the many reasons. So, while imperfect, I know that we're committed to giving more input to the Department of Commerce, and I think we have some strategies to see our way through to next steps. Most communities, the Pierce County Regional Council did advise adoption here. We very much respectfully hear the valid concerns by our peers at the city of DuPont. And again, I think we've documented some of those concerns in the findings of fact and have identified some really specific next steps to express those concerns with the State Department of Commerce and work on them substantively in the coming months and years. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the Roll-in Proposal 2023-22S?
Yes. Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Kruber.
Nay.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is five ayes and one nay.
On a vote of five ayes and one nay, the proposal is adopted. That brings us to Resolution R. 2023-89. Councilmember Herrera for a motion.
I move proposal R. 2023-89 for approval.
It's been properly moved and signed, and that we adopt Resolution 2023-89. Madam Clerk, please read the title into the record.
Proposal Number R. 2023-89, a resolution of the Pierce County Council initiating an analysis of proposed locations of automated traffic safety cameras within certain school zones and related requirements as a precursor to establishing a school zone automatic traffic safety camera program.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. So, the proposal before you today begins at page 106 of your electronic packet. It comes to you from the Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee, where it received a du-pass recommendation at that committee meeting of June 13th. Proposal is sponsored by Councilmembers Herrera, Campbell, and Denson. Now, the proposal before you enables the Pierce County Council to consider the future establishment of an automatic or automated traffic safety camera program in certain school speed zones to achieve increased safety through speed reduction. To implement a traffic safety camera program, state requires a legislative authority to prepare an analysis of the locations within the jurisdiction where the cameras are proposed to be located before enacting the ordinance establishing the program. So, the resolution before you initiates that process for the required analysis. It identifies four schools for the initial test of this program or analysis of this program. Those schools are Carson Elementary, Brulette Elementary, Central Avenue Elementary, and Collins Elementary. Those four schools are identified by the school districts, specifically Franklin Pierce and Puyallup School Districts as their preferred locations for these cameras. The proposal within your packet, in addition to the information I just provided, I'll note that there's a number of source documents that are linked in your packet that provide information on the efficacy of traffic safety enforcement cameras in school zones, including a study that was conducted for four schools in Seattle in the last few years. That shows you the benefit that those cameras can have in terms of changing driver behavior and reducing vehicular speeds. So, that's the proposal before you today. I will note that we do have Chief Lundberg available on the Zoom call. Chief Lundberg has quite a bit of experience with these cameras implementing these programs. He's a wealth of information. Should you have questions about the operational requirements, the experience that he's seen in other jurisdictions with these cameras. So, with that, councilmembers, I'll stand by and be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you. Chief Lundberg, do you have anything to add before we open it up for council questions?
I do not, and I apologize. I was not in the office today, so I am just on my phone.
Well, thank you for still making yourself available, Chief Lundberg. Questions or comments by councilmembers? Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. Just clarifying questions for those following along. This is only for inside the unincorporated area, and is it the urban growth zone or just all unincorporated Pierce County? What is the study's own area?
So, for the purposes of this resolution, it's the four schools, which are unincorporated Pierce County. There's no distinction made between urban and rural in terms of this resolution, but the four school sites are unincorporated Pierce County locations.
Okay. And this is just a study to see if there are good locations for this, if they have the safety issues and concerns that would warrant this level of enforcement?
That's correct. So, in order to initiate this program, which would require a separate ordinance of the council at a future date, an analysis has to occur, and that analysis will examine those school zones, look at traffic volumes, speeds, the geometry of the area, whether or not the school zones are properly established, as well as other requirements set forth in state law. The resolution also requests that the Planning and Public Works Department and Sheriff's Department provide the council with a program design, resource requirements, expected costs, expected revenues, so that you can have all of that information in hand before making a decision to actually establish a program. Assuming that the council sought in the public's interest to establish a program, ordinance would be required, and then there would be a procurement process to secure the cameras, contract with the vendor, have the cameras installed. So, it's many months down the road, but this is the initial process required by state law, the initial analysis to demonstrate or document that these are appropriate locations for these types of cameras.
Two more quick questions, if I may, Chair.
Sure.
If other PTA, parent-teacher associations wanted to improve safety around their school or school districts wanted to evaluate other ones, we'd have to start this process for the next set of schools for each time we want to do a school process similar to this?
The council would need to designate the locations by resolution and then modify the program after it had been adopted to show those locations, which could be something that, just as a reminder, the council has initiated this Vision Zero planning effort that the Planning and Public Works Department is actively engaged on. Something like traffic enforcement cameras in school zones could be a recommendation that comes out of that larger countywide study, could identify additional locations. So, that could be something in the future, but this is a starting point for the county just to understand the dynamics of the program and how it can be a benefit to the citizens. So, this is really your initial foray as a county into this new program if you choose to enact it.
And I think you said one of the things that this will study is the geometry of the location?
So, by that, I mean...
So, I just want to be clear. Mr. Miller was right that I would one day need geometry in. That's all.
Right. I'm just talking about sight distance, you know, appropriate sight lines for the cameras. That is what I'm referring to in that case.
Stay in school, kids.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair, and you asked a lot of the questions I had already. So, Mr. Taylor, thank you for working on this. Asking about the... I lost my train of thought there for a second, because you asked a lot of questions. The... Dang. Let me get back to you. Let me write this down again. I apologize, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Did you take geometry?
I took... I'm good at geometry.
I think I forgot my geometry.
I'm good at that.
I don't know that I remember my geometry. Councilmember Kruber.
Thank you, Chair. I'm wondering, is there a difference in zones from one school zone to another, that it requires a study for these versus studying where school zones already have cameras?
Well, in unincorporated Pierce County, we don't have any cameras set up in school zones currently. Now, some of the cities do, but the unincorporated area does not.
Okay.
So, is your question, once we approve the concept at four schools, why we would have to do an additional analysis? I'm not certain if I'm understanding your question.
Why wouldn't we just study the places that already have them in place? Why wouldn't we just study the places that already have them in place to see how they're effective, or is it because of the dynamics of the geometry?
Well, each, I would say that each location is somewhat unique in the sense of the volume of traffic, the speeds that are being experienced, perhaps pedestrian volumes, the limits of the school zone, whether or not a school zone exists in that particular location. So they're not, it's not all, they're not all the same, right? Each location is different. As far as the benefit of the cameras, you might, you know, you might argue that perhaps they're the same from location to location. I don't know. But this is an analysis that's required by five statute. So I'm not certain, I'm probably not answering your question directly and kind of struggling a little bit.
Maybe it's just because government is so big that it makes it difficult, because I would think nationally, there are lots of school zones with cameras, and we should be able to discern the pros and cons of the investment and the, you know, what happens.
Right. And if that, if that's your question, my answer is state law requires that you do an analysis of the specific locations where you're planning installing the cameras before you install them. You can't rely upon information from a different location to justify the cameras at that new location.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sorry it took me so long to get to that answer for you.
Might be an opportunity for reform in our state legislative agenda.
Yes, that would be good.
Vice Chair Campbell.
Well, and I would just answer a little bit, because I know we set some up in the city of Tacoma. While I was there, what you're studying is what's the safety in front of that school. We don't want to, well, some would say, hey, we should put some in front of every school. Well, maybe not every school has the same level of safety issues. And so it's about studying the safety issue where we are considering expending money to put in a system, not whether or not camera systems are effective. That's, it's been deemed or that, that's why we're looking at it here. It's what's the traffic study for this area? So really what we're doing is more of a traffic study in order to say, yes, this will be a positive influence in the area, or it'll have no influence in the area, so don't spend the money.
Councilmember Grover.
Thank you, Chair. I can understand that. I'm just, I have an aversion to tracking or the radar kind of a thing. And I would think that the local area has the knowledge to be able to discern the need without having to go through studies. I just, I mean, that's part of a big complaint from constituents, is you study it, everything, and study it again, and it just, it just gets old. But I get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does sound like an opportunity for us to give feedback to the legislature. Councilmember Herrera.
Okay, I think I have my thoughts together now. Thank you, Chair, for allowing me to speak again. My question is, this is the first, I guess you can call it a pilot, because the county doesn't have this at all. So does this analysis include, if we have the staffing, can the sheriff implement it? And, you know, if we can do it, does that include that in this analysis?
It does. So the Sheriff's Department, in reporting back on a proposed program design, is also asked to identify staffing requirements, so the resources needed to implement the program, whether or not commissioned officer is needed or limited commissioned officer is needed. One thing about this, these programs is that every potential infraction identified by the cameras has to be reviewed by an officer. So there is a staffing requirement associated with it. And so we're asking the Sheriff's Department to provide the council with what they would expect that staffing need to be, the cost associated with that, and then the revenue side, because the cameras, the infractions issued or that result from the camera use are a revenue generator that may cover the cost of the program. I'm not saying it's a profit center. It may cover the cost of the program. And so that's, that's what we're looking for from the Sheriff's Department for information like that, for the council to be informed when you make your future decision.
Got a question, if I may. So we do this analysis. Would this analysis, could they use this later down the road to maybe shorten up any future analyses or even help vision, our Vision Zero of the overall county? Would it, would that help?
It could provide a benefit, certainly. The analysis in terms of what it takes to operate the program, yes, that, that information presumably would be relevant to other locations. So that would definitely be helpful.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands at this time, so we will open this up for a public hearing on this proposal. If you wish to provide comment on this proposal number 2023-89, please raise your hand in Zoom or come forward and state your name for the record. We'll start with chambers. Is there anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on this proposal? Not seeing any. Is there anyone in Zoom? Mr. Weinsberry.
His hand has gone up and down, so let him talk.
Funnel rounding in 075, you can talk.
Ms. Giddings, I believe that's you. We believe you're muted.
They're not coming off of me.
Ms. Giddings, do you want to unmute yourself to provide comment? Not seeing the caller ending in 075 unmute themselves. We'll bring it back to council. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Are there final remarks by council members? Vice Chair Campbell.
Two more remarks, Chair, and thank you, everyone, for your work on this. I think a lot of this is rooted in what we saw during the pandemic was twofold. We saw the numbers of our deputies out on the streets reduce, while we saw traffic speeding and traffic fatalities and traffic accidents increasing. And as part of the reduction in the number of officers, commissioned officers that we had, one of the areas that they had to eliminate was our traffic enforcement departments, down to just really enough to investigate the accidents, not really do any proactive enforcement. But people are saying, we need something because we're having children that are getting hit. We're having all kinds of accidents, near accidents, speeding happening all in many areas. And so this is one tool that is available for us to look at, particularly, you know, in very focused areas around our schools. We've seen them in our cities. They work, and so I think it's an important thing for us to look at. One other thing, I'm hoping that, should this pass, it comes back to us, and it's a program we need to set up, and I think we're going to have to work around what's called the limited commission deputy. That could be someone who's basically just at the desk doing the work. They don't have to be out on, out on the streets, that we take a closer look at how we set that up and how we might be able to broaden that to include people with disabilities that may not be able to get a full commission due to physical or mental disabilities, but to sit and watch the cameras and determine whether or not someone was speeding is something they might not only be able to do, but might excel at. And so I'm hopeful that we can perhaps expand who it is that we can add to our employment due to what's needed of the job compared to what might be needed in other aspects for a deputy. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Interesting ideas. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for your questions. You asked everything that I was thinking and then some. So one of my reasons for supporting this is along the lines, we, I was passed in a school zone yesterday during, when the flashers would have been on, so the flashers were not on. But I was going the speed limit, and they had to have been going 45. So at that time of day, if it was a school zone, so first, they passed me, there was no passing lane. And then secondly, it was a school zone right near a crosswalk. And, and it is an area that has cameras, so thankfully, again, it wasn't flashing, there were no kids around. But behaviors have changed, and this is a tool that we have access to, but we've never used as a county. And one of the things is we need to understand as, as the budget writers, what are the impacts both to our law enforcement, also our courts, because people can come and refute the claims, and so there could be impacts to our courts. And then the technology, how often we go in and have to repair things. And though we have companies that do this as a business model, we need to remember that some of these things can become punitive instead of safety. So we have to walk that fine line and figure out the best way. So I think this is a wonderful pilot, a great way to learn in some different geographies in our county. And then, once we know what it really means, we could look at our Target Zero. What are some other communities that have been impacted by traffic violence, or school districts are saying this is a huge issue? It's a tool and a trigger that we could use, and we'd have some actual information around the impact. So I appreciate that it's going forward, and we'll be supporting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Grover.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be kind of a weak yes on this. It's, I... I'm pretty sure Robert Smalls doesn't call out a name. It's still a weak yes. It's, it's something where we've had lawlessness unchecked for so long. And, you know, when we don't get that under control, I don't know that this is going to be an answer for it. And yes, it is a very lucrative business for whoever is checking them, and it's lucrative for the attorneys, because you can challenge us and get it off. I know people who do that. So it's, and it's an expense. Yeah, I've gone where I've been through a school zone, I went, oh my gosh, it's 35. It went, it's, I'm not someone who goes out deliberately in school zones, speeds. So I, since it's a study, I'll go for this. I just would rather see lawlessness get checked a little bit more overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to remind everyone, the ultimate goal of this is, you know, to protect our, our children. You know, I've seen how these cameras do work in cities, how they do slow, slow people down. Early in my police career, I was not a fan of these, because we had plenty of police officers to do those type of jobs. But just like I think was talked about earlier, we don't have the resources, we don't have the, the traffic unit out there doing emphasis patrols in our school zones. And, you know, out in Puyallup at some of these specific schools, in the mornings, you see parents out with posters that say, slow down. It's a great reminder, these cameras that are in some of the cities like Fife, they slow people down. They slow me down. And I think it's a, it's time to take a look at maybe using this tool. This is an analysis to see if it works. We're going to look at the potential benefits, the maybe potential drawbacks on this, and I'm willing to take a look at all this and keeping in mind of all valuable options to employ any evidence-based strategies to help keep our kids safe. So I'll be supporting this today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I too will be supporting this. I want to give gratitude to the sponsors, councilmembers Herrera, Campbell, and Denson. You know, when the council initiated a Vision Zero program to state boldly and clearly that we want to work hard to eliminate all traffic fatalities and serious injuries by 2035, we said very seriously, we're not going to wait until 2035 to make progress. And we said, we're not going to wait till a plan is fully developed to make progress, that we're looking for early actions to make progress in making our roads much safer for all users, whether you walk, bike, drive a car, take transit, however you choose to move around. And this is just, I think, a really important example of us advancing traffic safety. So I'm, I'm really grateful that we're taking the work seriously and continuing to work at identifying all tools to advance the works. Thank you to the staff, and very interested in the, in the work to come back. There's some very serious and important questions to, to answer in this phase. Madam Clerk, will you please call the Roll-in Proposal R 2023-89?
Councilmember Grover.
Yay.
I'm sorry.
Yay.
Yay.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the proposal is adopted. That brings us to proposal number R 2023-91. Councilmember Hitchens for a motion.
Chair, I'd like to move adoption of R 2023-91.
Second. It's been properly moved and signed that we adopt proposal R 2023-91. Madam Clerk, please read the title to the record.
Proposal number R 2023-91, a resolution of the Pierce County Council authorizing the Pierce County Executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Pierce County and the municipal corporations of Auburn.
Last line, please.
The last line is the formation of the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council.
Thank you. Ms. Merrick.
Good afternoon, Chair Mello, members of the council. For the record, Lee Beth Merrick, council staff. Before you is R 2023-91, which authorizes the executive to enter into an interlocal agreement to create the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council. This comes to you from the Rules and Operations Committee with a due pass recommendation. For some brief background, Pierce County is expected to receive 29 million in funding from various opioid settlements, with the Pierce County Funding Region expected to receive a total of 48 million. This is over the course of 17 years. The first annual payment was distributed in December of 2022. Before the funds can be spent, each funding region is required to form an opioid abatement council to ensure the funds are spent in accordance with the settlement's approved uses. The proposal before you, which can be found starting on page 132 of your packet, authorizes the executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Pierce County and the cities of Auburn, Bonny Lake, Edgewood, Fife, Gig Harbor, Lakewood, Puyallup, Sumner, Tacoma, and University Place to form the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council. The opioid abatement council is created to fulfill the obligation set forth in the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding, which includes overseeing and ensuring the parties spend the opioid settlement funds on the approved uses outlined in the settlement agreement. The parties are responsible for allocating their settlement funds and must report their allocations to the opioid abatement council. Each party may appoint one member to the opioid abatement council. Members are appointed for three-year terms and may serve multiple terms. A party may choose to leave their position vacant, but the opioid abatement council must have at least five members. The abatement council is administered by the Pierce County Auditor's Office. Each party must annually reserve 10% of their settlement funds for the opioid abatement council's administration costs. At the end of each fiscal year, the Auditor's Office is required to send each party an itemized invoice for the administrative expenses related to the opioid abatement council, and this will be prorated based on the formula used to distribute the settlement funds. The equity note is available starting on page 129 of your packet. That concludes my briefing. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm not sure if folks from the prosecutor's office are on the line, but Michelle Luna may be standing by.
Thank you, Ms. Merrick.
Doesn't look like it. So I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments for Ms. Merrick before we open this up for a public hearing? Councilmember Grover.
Thank you, Chair. Looking at this, this is a 36-month interlocal agreement limit?
No, I mean, the, the interlocal agreement should span the course of the distribution of funds, which is over 17 years, and then there's additional language that I think it's five years after the last settlement fund is received. So it's, would likely be over 20 years?
Okay, because I'm, I'm like looking duration, the, I'll have to look deeper, but I'm, I'm seeing effective until 36 months, oh, after the final distribution of such.
Okay, so it's 36, so three years after. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Not seeing any other hands by council at this time. Open this up for a public hearing. This is a public hearing on the formation of the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council. If you wish to provide comment, please raise your hand in Zoom or come forward and state your name for the record. We'll start with those in chambers. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments.
Oh, hey, this is our music. I like that you said that, right? I'm on the streets right now, and this, the opioid or whatnot, these people are like on the streets and whatnot. It's not good. We have to get them all these perks and stuff, you know, these homeless people. They have bad intentions when they're on the drugs. I actually did, I got my wisdom teeth pulled out, and I was sitting, watching TV, and every commercial looked like a movie. So I get the attractiveness to it. That's a bad addiction. How are we going to make this better? You know, try to level them off, try to give them lesser drugs. They say, Fortsum, or... What they got going down right now, the medicine is, is not good. It says like 50 times stronger than the heroin, and like, this is a bad problem, guys. So how are we going to cap that? You know, we could try, try to chop it up with the, try to limit the drug intake into America. At the end of the, they're always going to bring it in, right? So, I mean, maybe try to throw out like a bonus to the, the doctors and, um, you know, try to give them a drug that's going to level these people off of it, you know? It's, it's a bad situation. That actually really hurts me. I lose tears at this, I, because I'm on the streets, right? I run around every night, night and then, and the drug addicts, they see the, the kid with money and stuff, and they really, they hit me up. It was not good. And then, um, but, because they're not in the right state of mind, right? So how do we fix this, you know? Put some Noctane bottles?
Need to stay focused on the formation of the opioid abatement council.
Yeah, the Noctane bottles to, to fix the, um, if you OD on the, on that bad drug, you know, put that in the streets where it's, it's dangerous and whatnot, and then put a bunch of water bottles in the same. We're just trying to save these guys in the meanwhile. But I mean, how we fix that, that's a damn question to have, but it's tough. I'm so blessed I never got into those bad drugs. Um, what was I saying, it's the council. It's just like, um, it's a damn, it's a question to have, yo. But like I said, you know, get doctors on the set, you know, try to make it better medicine and level these guys off, and the government's going to provide the medicine to get those guys off of it. That's what I kind of figure. But I like that you said that because it's like, it keeps me scared. Like, that's one of the things that, I hate those ghost people, you know, on the streets and stuff, and it keeps me scared. And, um, it's one of the very few things that does. And, uh, but, uh, uh, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers wishing to provide comment on the formation of the opioid abatement council? Not seeing any. Mr. Weinsberg, anyone online?
I see no hands, sir.
Not seeing any hands raised online. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Councilmember Hinchin?
Thank you, Chair, and, and just to clarify, to make sure there's, there's no communicate, confusion between the council or anyone in the public, the formation of the opioid abatement council is not an allocation committee. They are not going to be making decisions about what programs to fund, what, what we're going to do with these monies. That is a much larger conversation, but we aren't even really talking about those things until we have our auditing function. Because these are settlement dollars, there were certain rules and regulations that came down from the legal teams that ran these settlements. They want to make sure that the money is spent and that people can't come back to them later. And to do that, we have to have an auditing function. So this, really appreciate the auditing, auditor's team, and the auditor herself, Ms. Linda Farmer, being willing to, to take this on. I appreciate that in the One Washington, it clearly articulates how we pay for this service because there, there needs to be staff time, there's a required data analysis, a publicly facing data analysis where people can see how we are investing these dollars. But at the same time, they are very intentional about saying it can be no more than because the dollars are supposed to be for services, because the opioid epidemic is horrific, it is killing people every day, it is destroying families and lives. And so to get to that very important work, we have to get this done. I believe we, I know we have many cities that have already passed this, including a couple that have already chosen who's on their opioid abatement council. So I was rather surprised to see that, and then like, okay, good job. Overachiever, we haven't even passed it at the council, so, but really just acknowledge that this was a really important first step, and a heavy lift, running an interlocal agreement is challenging to get cities to agree in a really short amount of time. So thank you to everybody that was working on that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other final remarks? I want to really thank the years of work by the opioid task force as staffed and supported by the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department that kept this community focused on solutions. Previous council chair, Derek Young, played an instrumental role in the convening of that. And as of late, to get to this moment where we have the opportunity to think about how to use legal settlement funds as wisely as possible, as Councilmember Hinchin said. Councilmember Hinchin, thank you for your extreme leadership, especially over the last year or so, to really help bring communities together, to focus on collaboration, working together. This is a, an administrative step, but it took a lot of work to, to get here. And while we are talking about the audit function, which is very different than the allocation function, your work to bring communities together to figure out how to do this important auditing function, no doubt will parlay into continuing to build trust with all the communities as we work together to figure out how to make best use of these legal settlement funds to abate this really significant crisis our local community and nations facing. So thank you for all the work that you've done, Councilmember Hinchin. Thank you to our staff and prosecuting attorney's staff who've helped support this important effort as well. With that, Madam Clerk, will you please call the role in resolution 2023-91?
Yes. Councilmember Denson?
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera?
Aye.
Councilmember Hinchin?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Grover?
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello?
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That brings us to other business and announcements. Is there any other business or announcements by council members this evening? Not seeing any. Ms. Long or Mr. Taylor, is there any other business for council today? Seeing no other business or announcements. That brings us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for members of the community to come forward and provide comments on any business that might be important to you that was not an action item on today's council meeting agenda. You'll be asked to state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your points. Thank you for coming to the podium. We'll start with you, and then I'll go to the, I'll, I'll go to those who, who signed in, so I invite you to introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Janet Stewart. I've been a citizen of Pierce County since the age of seven. I grew up in Lakewood, and now I live in West Tacoma. I'm a nurse, and I work for the Washington State Nurses Association. I represent the nurses of Good Samaritan Hospital in Puyallup. We are here to, today to bring awareness, and I just want to clarify, not looking for an action per se, but just like to get to know you and get, have you get to know us a little bit. So we're here today to bring awareness of the fight Good Samaritan nurses are facing as they strive to get a fair contract for MultiCare. There are more than 3,000 WSNA union nurses working in this county to include Tacoma General, Good Samaritan, St. Joseph's, St. Clair's, CHI Rehab, Fresenius Kidney Care, and the Washington Soldiers Home. MultiCare is the largest private sector employer in the county. We believe MultiCare is, MultiCare is neglecting its responsibility to the community by refusing to improve working conditions for the Good Sam nurses who have sacrificed for years providing patient care through extremely difficult and devastating pandemic. The nurses have said enough. They're no longer, they will no longer put their licenses at risk, being expected to do more and more with fewer and fewer resources and support. They are standing up for safe staffing standards, which helps them to be able to provide better and safer care for their patients. They are standing up for break nurses to relieve them from their state mandated meal and rest breaks. This fight is not about economics, it's about improving our ability to give the best care possible. We have completed 18 bargaining sessions over the past four and a half months and have not been able to come to an agreement. We have taken many actions to let MultiCare know that we are serious and we won't back down. Though MultiCare claims to be suffering financially, they have plans to build a 160-bed tower at Good Samaritan. WSNA nurses testified at the Department of Health Certificate of Needs hearing and repeatedly asked MultiCare for accountability on how do you plan to staff this new tower when you can't properly staff the beds you currently have? The nurses took a vote of no confidence in MultiCare CEO Bill Robertson. Hundreds of nurses voted unanimously that they do not have confidence in Bill Robertson's leadership. We posted a billboard on I-5 saying, "Hey, Bill, safe staffing saves lives." Last week, we received a letter of support from Pierce County Central Labor Council. Shout out to our union siblings who are supporting us. Today and tomorrow, we are taking a strike vote. We are determined to fight for better working conditions. We are fighting for our profession and for our community. We would like MultiCare, Good Samaritan, to do the right thing, put patients before profits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. We're going to go back to the sign-in sheet and see if any members who signed in wishes to provide comment. Excuse me if I can't read your handwriting. Catherine Stringer? Followed by Ann Landon.
Council, Chair. I didn't realize writing my name on there would mean I wanted to speak, but that's okay.
Don't have to, but you're welcome to.
Well, that's okay. I am a bit of an introvert, and if you would have told me three months ago that I would have gone to a union meeting or that I'd be in front of the Pierce County Council, and here I would have been off in the corner. So if I turn red, we'll just, just, that's just par of the course, that's okay. I've been a nurse 32 years. I worked a long time in multiple hospitals. Until two union meetings last month, I had never been to a union meeting. I've always been a union member, but I've been in the corner working quietly and doing what I'm supposed to do and taking good care of patients. I worked in ICU, stepped on open heart, ED, Swedish when it was Providence Hospital, then when it became Swedish, and I took a retirement package when it became, I mean, a severance package when it became Providence again and moved down here. Worked briefly in California when my husband was in the Navy. And as an aside, nothing to do with that, I'm the daughter of a 20-year-old disabled adult, and I am appreciative of what I hear, Councilmember Campbell, about thinking about jobs, watching safety cameras, and providing for housing. I'm my full forward vote on that. But to the topic, I was floored between watching negotiation number 14 and coming back and seeing number 15, and I am motivated, using union-type words that I had never done before, and people on my unit are like, who's this talking? The pandemic was something, it was something else. And ICU is taking care of three patients intubated when that's not safe. And the thing we care about most, and I can't believe this is me saying this, is safe staffing. It's not the wages, that's important, but it's the staffing that's safe, and adequate break coverage. I have worked seven to eight hours without someone to cover my two intubated patients, and it's not safe to have my neighbor who has two intubated patients watch my two. That's four patients. You don't want me to watch you or your family member or your parents or your child. That staffing ratio isn't safe. There are nurses who have left Good Sam because they're concerned about the state of what's happening right now, going to other hospitals. I recognize that I do not know the financial part, the whole picture from Good Sam's side, but I can put together that hiring and retraining another nurse is expensive, and if you can keep those that you have, that's going to save the corporation money. So providing for, being the hospital, being Good Sam, being the hospital where nurses want to work, that's the goal to have, to be the best in the South Sound. And part of that is providing for breaks and having adequate staffing. I'll let my other fellow people speak to some more details, but I thank you for the chance to speak, and I've never been as concerned about it as I am right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your, thank you for your service. Thank you for having the courage to speak and for being here. You're welcome anytime. Ann Landon, followed by May Smith?
Hi. Hi, my name's Ann Landon. I'm an emergency department nurse. I've been living in this area for about seven years. I came as a traveler to Good Sam, and I was impressed. I stopped my traveling career to stay here because I love this area. I live six minutes away from this building. I love the people, and I loved working at a union hospital, but things have changed for the worse at Good Sam. At one time, they seemed to, as their name implies, care about patients and care about their staff, but that changed over the pandemic, and it seems like they've replaced their core values with ambition and greed, because they're trying to buy hospitals, build new buildings, and grow the MultiCare chain of hospitals on the backs of nurses by understaffing us and not giving us breaks, our state mandated breaks. And I have to tell you that we were, most of nurses work 12-hour shifts, and being able to eat a lunch or even use the restroom is not just a base, a worker's need, that's a basic human right. All nurses should be able to take a break. We should be able to have the adequate staffing we need to care for our patients. I'm starting to get a little emotional because I do care, I'm proud of the work I do as a nurse. I care about my patients. I work with patients in their most desperate times, and I hold family members' hands when their family members are dying. And lately, we've been so understaffed, we have to ignore our patients and only deal with the ones that are actively dying because we don't have enough staff to care for people. If that was my family member, if that was your family member, you would want more, you would expect more from a multimillion-dollar corporation or health system like MultiCare. So that's what has brought me here today. I am a part of the bargaining team, and we are fighting hard. We are literally fighting for our lives and our patients' lives. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. May Smith?
Hello, my name is May Smith, and I'm also nervous, so I'm going to read my statement. Thank you for allowing me to speak on safe staffing at Good Sam Hospital. I have been living in Pierce County since 2017, and I also have been working at the hospital since then. I am a registered nurse, and I also do charge duty in the Family Birth Center, and I am a staff committee member for the last three years. So the, this committee is made up of nurses from the various departments of the hospital, and the goal is to come up with staffing ratio matrices to help both the nurse and the patients stay safe. Yearly, these ratios are reviewed by the nurses with management, voted on by the staffing committee members, and once approved, submitted to upper management, who ultimately has a final say to say yes or no. Since my involvement in this committee, I have seen that the matrices have either been denied or modified in ways that do not seem to benefit the safe staffing, safe staffing ratios for most of the departments. Our patients are getting sicker and needing higher acuity care, and this is in all areas of nursing, and they are demanding more time and attention from the RN to keep the patients safe. Because management has a history of devaluing the staffing committee recommendations and implementing their own plans, we are demanding safeguards to protect patients and nurses from being, from being able to give safe staffing assignments. That's what we want. Another concern is because we do not have a dedicated break nurse, it is either up to the charge nurse or up to a fellow staff member who also has a full load of patients to relieve us for our breaks. So we are fighting for those protections also, because that is what's going to keep our patients safe, and that's what's going to keep our licenses safe. We are here to advocate for the nurses and the mothers and babies of our community to ensure that they receive the best and safest care possible. This is why we are taking the strike vote today and tomorrow, as management does not work, want to guarantee safe staffing standards in our contract. I want to continue working at Good Sam, but in an environment that offers safe staffing, that we get the uninterrupted breaks, and that we especially are able to give the best nursing care that we can to all of our patients. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for being with us. Crystal Doll has indicated not willing to speak. Is that still the case, Crystal? Thank you for being with us. Liz Leskey, would you like to speak?
Hi, my name is Liz Leskey. I thank you, first of all, for all that you do for us in the county. I'm a registered nurse. I work at Tacoma General Hospital, MultiCare, and I am here in support of my sisters and brothers at Good Sam. I was on the negotiating team at, excuse me, Tacoma General, and we fought a really tough, long battle, but we've got some really great, um, sorry. long battle, but we've got some really great, sorry, words escape me these days. Our contract is a really good one. So we know MultiCare can do it. We don't know what they're doing or why they're doing what they're doing to the Good Sam nurses. I will tell you that a strike vote is huge. It is not taken lightly, and it is something that Tacoma General nurses nearly came to, we were able to avoid it. The respect I have for my sisters and brothers at Good Sam is huge for even going there with that strike vote, because they're not going to get paid when they're out on that picket line. And they're going to, they have had to decide that they're going to forego what their families need so that they can show the community that they are dead serious. Their patients need them to have safe staffing, to be able to get breaks. I will say the last thing, I'm a charge nurse where I work, and we have what's called System Float nurses come over. Sometimes they just work all the different MultiCare hospitals in the system, and I recently had a Good Sam, or a nurse who came over to work with us, and she'd been doing some shifts at Good Sam. And when I said, "Hey, it's break time, head to break," she couldn't, "What? No, you got to go to break." And then I told her it was lunchtime, and then she was really amazed, and then she got another break. And we're getting our breaks at MultiCare for the most part, and they deserve theirs. It is a basic human right to be able to eat, and nurses are a whole lot safer taking care of their patients when they've got food in their stomachs. Thanks for, thanks for all you do, and thanks for supporting the nurses.
Thank you for being with us. We have next Ian Mikusko. Ian, don't wish to speak. Thank you for being with us. Kyle Jollyboy, followed by Cheyenne Kellicks.
Good afternoon, Counsel. My name's Kyle Jollyboys. People call this home, this is home. I was born at St. Joe's Hospital. I live right down here, not too far away. And I started coming up in front of you guys and Tacoma City Council over the LNG plant. We have an 8-million-gallon LNG plant right out the window, and they're going to fill it one day. 166-kiloton bomb, what it is. All this, all this is gone. But what is more frightening currently, and my family doesn't like me coming up here because my last name is Jollyboys, and my family's in politics, but I got another side of the family that's in politics. His name is Bushnell, and he sits on Tacoma City Council. And I'm a South Tacoma kid, I grew up in South Tacoma, and I'm disabled, and I thank you guys for standing up for the disabled. But my cousin has let me down right now, and he's letting down South Tacoma. What they want to do is they want to put a 2.5-million-square-foot warehouse on top of Tacoma's aquifer. That is asinine, and Tacoma City Council approved this. Tacoma's in Pierce County. I don't know what you guys say about the destruction of the aquifer by a Chicago-based company that's going to build it, a 2.5-million-square-foot warehouse. Do you know what the traffic is going to be in South Tacoma? We do. 12,000 extra semis a day, and they have cameras in South Tacoma. Those cameras are going to be going off all day long. This has got to stop. We couldn't stop the LNG. We did stop the methanol in 2015. We can stop this. We don't need no more warehouses in Pierce County. Seriously, we do not. They're tearing down Jerry Oaks and Lakewood for warehouses. We have an environment to care about. You know, we talk about being audited and deadlines and money and stuff like that all day long. We got to talk about the future. 2050, if that thing goes off or something happens on Tacoma Aquifer, your 2050 plan is gone. So as a citizen, I'm begging you to stand up for what we stand on, and that is the Puyallup Nation's land that we took from them. We do, they deserve some respect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Followed by Eric.
Good afternoon. My name is Cheyenne Kelly, and I've been a nurse at Good Samaritan for the last two and a half years. Our bargaining team has been working since January to get us a good, safe contract. Our biggest concern is our patients. It's not really time off or an increase in pay. We want to make sure that our patients are safe at all times, not just when we're on breaks, but also when we are taking care of our patient team. As you heard from some of our other ladies back here, our time since December, it's been a fight to make sure that our patients are safely taken care of, and then with this new contract coming in, we want to make sure that there's verbiage in there that will protect our patients. Thank you.
Thank you for being with us. Eric? And this is the last person I have signed up in chambers. If there's anyone online, please raise your hand in Zoom so we can be prepared to call on you. Eric.
Hey, guys. This is everybody's, Charlie Dursis. I, you know, try to give them more bonuses and more money, like, those are some real heroes, you know? You have to motivate positive people in the positive direction, good positive things. Today, in these couple minutes, like, I really, I think I have an idea that can change that goes to the White House, right? Shout out to America, we got, all I value is health and freedom. I know President Putin from Russia, he's like, he thinks he's top dog because World War II, he lost the most soldiers, right? You got to think about this, right? But-
Eric, are rules are such that you need to address items that the Pierce County government has jurisdiction over?
Oh, I understand. Yeah, absolutely. And then when I go down to it, it's like my big homie, Justin, like, he goes to these public hearings, right? It's all about money, right? So I think I have an idea where you guys can make more money, the government. And it's, it's simple. It involves like people giving, it gives like straight cash to the government. So like, the citizens give straight cash to the government in various ways, and I actually wrote a website for you guys. So it's the, it's like Improve My Government, Improve, yeah, ImproveMyGovernment.com, and that's the program. And it's like, so you got Edgar Boulevard, Doc Edgar Boulevard, you're going to cap it over here, you know? I want to say Music Boulevard. You put money on it, now you guys get the straight money, and that guy's got their refuge, dude. It's so much farther than this, guys. Imagine the potential. You know, people found like, they met each other on a corner, now you sold a palm tree on that corner, give X amount of dollars for that. The potential behind that, and then we'll cap it further, it's the USA Lotto. It's the, you know, you can like, the top 70% of the tax earners, you know, it's taxing a small amount, you know, .007 and whatnot, and then you get the Lotto out to them, and then every winner, there's a winner every day on the national news and whatnot. Then, you know, just, you know, we just, we just keep going, you know? 15% of their take goes back to charity, 15% goes into investment, and then they get the rest, you know? There's so many ways we can benefit the world with the America and the democracy, because I really think the USA is the best country on earth. And I'll keep going, yeah.
Does anyone else in chambers wishing to provide input in Citizens Forum, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes to make your remarks. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Debbie Vineyard, and I just want to say my heartfelt thank you. You are still my heroes to this day. I have an adult daughter who's disabled, and she does go to the emergency rooms in the hospitals, you know, periodically, and, you know, she depends on these folks. You know, they help her in a time when, like you mentioned, has really had a bad time in her life. So I just want to give my support to all of the nurses all over. And the reality is, we never know when we're going to need them at all, whether you're young or old. So thank you very much.
Thank you for being with us. Anyone else in chambers? Please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
Lupika Maravan. I'm a teacher in Tacoma, part of Tacoma Education Association. Nurses were on the front line of the pandemic, and we all rightfully call them heroes and essential workers, and so it's time that we treat them as such. They deserve so much, and all they're asking for is reasonable working conditions, and we all deserve the best healthcare, and good working conditions for nurses means good healthcare for us. So I just want to speak in solidarity with nurses.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seeing any. We're going to turn to Zoom. Please raise your hand in Zoom if you wish to participate in Citizens Forum. We'll start with Nancy Shaw. Nancy, you have three minutes to make your remarks. Nancy, we see your hand up in Zoom. Please unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Okay, now, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I just wanted to comment on the warehouse thing, because I missed the rest of the meeting, so I'm not sure what you guys talked about, but I know you guys talked about the warehouse thing. And right now, in Tacoma, there's over 200 warehouses that are for lease, they're sitting empty, and if you go in all of Pierce County, there's over like 400-something warehouses that are sitting empty. And over in Frederickson specifically, they just built, God, I don't even know how many square feet of warehouses, some, some odd million square feet of warehouses, and they were supposed to be utilized within like the past two years, and every single one of them still sits empty to this day. So like, maybe instead of allowing another company to like contaminate our water sources and like destroy our aquifers and stuff, maybe we should utilize the warehouses we already have. I don't know. That's just my opinion, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you. Can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, my name's Nancy.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom? Please raise your hand.
I have somebody next to me who would like to say if nobody else is in line.
We will restart the clock if that person can state their name for the record, and they'll have three minutes as well.
No, say your name. He changes mine.
Okay. We are flexible. Anyone else online? Not seeing any. We'll close the Citizens Forum portion of our meeting and bring it back to Counsel. I'll look to see if there are any final remarks by Counsel members. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to kind of bring us from the end to the beginning of the meeting, maybe back to the end. First of all, I look out, and I want to thank the nurses from Good Sam's for being here today. I see some familiar faces. I've had the unfortunate opportunity to spend too much time at Good Sam in the last year, no offense. Wonderful Starbucks there, but not my favorite place to hang out, but the work that you guys do just has touched me. I've seen it firsthand, the work that you guys do, so I greatly appreciate that. Earlier in the meeting, we did a moment of silence for two people that were killed from gun violence at Music Festival on the other side of the state. I don't know if the names have been released yet, and I just saw they came up. I know one of them, I believe, has Pierce County connections. Among those who died was Brandy Eskamilla and her fiance, Joslyn Ruiz, who are currently in Seattle, and Joslyn was a nurse. And so my heart and apology go out to you, but the shooter was wounded by police, and I believe is still currently in the hospital. And what I know about nurses as not just heroes but professionals, that despite that, probably still getting the best standard of care. And how hard that must be and how much, my heart goes out to the work and the job that you guys are asked to do every day, and my heart go out to the families of Joslyn and Brandy, who were engaged to be married. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Councilmember Dentson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I will echo the comments of Counselmember Campbell. Very well said. Many of my family members are in the nursing field, a lot of them actually, and I have a lot of friends that are nurses, including people in this room today. So I want to thank you for your service. It's very obvious from your testimony here that this isn't about you. This is about the patients, this is about your profession and the highest level of care, that you can tell that you really care, and that it hurts not to be able to, or to be providing that care, because I know you are, but how difficult it has to be if you're tired or hungry and scared, right? Because I imagine there's a lot of fear that's going on when you're not feeling like you're able to operate at your best because of the working conditions. So I want to thank you all for all you've done throughout your whole careers. Certainly, the last couple of years have been really, really difficult, and thank you and the others that have come today to speak in solidarity and support of you all just keeping, keeping the community safe. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dentson. In closing, sincere thank you to everyone who came to petition their government and speak their piece and share what's on your mind. Thank you to the nurses who have the courage to stand up to, for very safe, safer working conditions for both yourselves, and we know, most importantly, you do it for the people you provide care for every day. So thank you for lifting up the voices of those who can't be here and making your voices heard, and we wish you strength and solidarity, and know that we are watching, and appreciate that you have the back of your sisters and brothers and the people that you provide critical care for. So thank you for your courage. So you know the business before the Pierce County Council. We stand adjourned.